I would like to call the May 22 Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please, the Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region, where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance is, I don't see the East High group, so the pledge of, would you please rise to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item, Patrick?
First item, under reports, service employees international.
I do not see anyone here. Next item.
Next item, under reports, united teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Okay, good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Cheryl Logan, Vice President Diane Albert, board members, and Superintendent Beilefeld, did I say that right? Okay. And welcome, it's, welcome to, I didn't realize this was going to be your, your first meeting, but we're excited to see you up here. It's hard to believe that we've finally reached the final Monday of the school year. I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude for the hard work and dedication that our teachers and certified staff have done this past year. Despite many challenges, our educators have persevered and continued to provide meaningful education to our students. As a parent of a USD 259 student for the past 12 years, I have witnessed the amazing impact of our teachers on my son's education. From pre-K to high school, Wichita Public School teachers have provided him with the tools and support needed to succeed. Their dedication and commitment to helping him reach his full potential has been invaluable. At the last BOE meeting, I discussed the UTW Certified Staff Survey, that final report from Wichita State University. The results were eye-opening and highlighted some of the challenges that our certified staff still face. Patrick has given a paper copy of the workload survey for each of you. I look forward to meeting with each of you individually to discuss the survey results in more detail and how to address any issues that have been identified. Our goal is to create an environment where educators can be successful. We understand that the success of our students depend on the success of our teachers, and we want to ensure that everyone has what they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for a copy of the report. Ernestine? Yes?
I would, am I on? Yeah. I would like for you to take back to the teachers, the boards, and especially my thanks for this year. I believe in the last three years, is that how long it's been? Four? Four years? Has been, I've been involved in education and teaching since the 1960s, and I do believe that the last four years have been the hardest for teachers that I've ever seen in the United States. And it's not just here, but it's everywhere. And I want you to take back to our teachers how much we are grateful and impressed, and we're so thrilled to have the teachers sign their contracts and decide to stay with us. We love them and we want them to stay. Please take that back to the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, we actually have our, our last meeting tonight of the school year with all of our building reps, and we're giving out scholarships and celebrating our retirees, and I'll let them know. They'll really appreciate that. Thank you.
From all of us, thank you. Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, public communications.
I'm seeing none. Next item?
Next item, consent.
Kathy, do you have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
D eight.
D eight. Okay. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Hazel?
Nothing to pull.
Diane?
Nothing to pull.
I have nothing. Stan?
I'd like to pull B two, the sidewalk project, CMA.
Okay. Ernestine?
Nothing to pull.
All right. Let's start with just the first one first, so Stan, we'll start with you with B two.
Do we want to?
Oh, yeah, let's.
I move that we approve the consent agenda other than the two items that have been pulled.
I second it.
Thank you. Yes. Julie made the motion to approve the rest of the items, and Kathy seconded. Please raise your right hand if you approve. Motion passes seven zero. Now we'll do B two.
Thank you, Cheryl. I just had a quick question. Not sure how to address Superintendent-elect or something. I'll just say Kelly right now, is that okay? Kelly, my understanding is on this sidewalk project, we're going to run the length of the corner, the north-east corner to the building in order to save some bus routes and provide a safer route for the kids that are walking at CMA?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And this has been run through the city for their approval too, and do you know if the neighborhood also got a chance to look at it?
Okay. Luke, do you want to come to the mic and, so yes to the city?
Yeah, just, just yes to the city, we have not reached out to the neighborhood at this point. We have heard that there's, there is some desire, quite a bit of desire to have a better walking path directly providing from that neighborhood directly to the school.
And that's been from past conversations with the neighborhood, correct?
Right, right.
And can we, at some point, get a diagram or a map of where the sidewalk is actually going to go?
Yes, and I'm sorry, you did request that and I did not bring it today, but I can absolutely provide that to you.
And I, I'm very comfortable voting in favor of this today because I do, I think this has been vetted, and it seemed like it will correct some problems there. So I move that we adopt B two, sidewalk project, CMA.
I second it.
Motion was made by Stan and seconded by Ernestine. I'm seeing no questions, so please raise your hand if you're in favor. Motion passes seven zero. D eight. Kathy?
Thank you. I guess this is for you, Mr. Hudson. Is it common practice for the district to have a 17-year workman's compensation case?
So one thing that my team has been working on over the last six weeks is auditing workers' compensation cases that have been open and held in reserves for quite some time. We've had some that have gone as far back as 2003. This particular claimant had had an active case and eventually had a full knee replacement, so this is not being closed down full and final due to an IME evaluation. That stands for Independent Medical Evaluation by their doctor, and the administrative law judge would not close it based on that through the advice of our work comp legal counsel. So again, we've asked for enough on this particular claim that'll pay for future medical, and then if there's no future medical claims requested after a period of 24 months or two years, then we can petition the work comp court, the administrative law judge, to close that claim down full and final.
Does the district have their own physician for workman's comp?
We do have a physician that we have assigned to our folks.
And do the employees have to go to that one first, or can they choose to go to their own doctor?
Under Kansas workers' compensation law, an employee cannot go to their own doctor. They can for up to $500 of unauthorized medical. Otherwise, they see the district's physician, and we get to direct the medical.
Has this employee been getting paid monthly since 2007?
Yeah, because they're actively at work.
So they're at work and collecting workman's comp?
They're not only, they're not collecting workers' compensation.
Okay.
If they're actively working, so there is no temporary, total disability nor temporary partial disability.
Okay, but this will not close the case until a doctor determines that there's no future problem?
If this individual by and through their attorney makes no request for future medical, then it will close after two years, and we monitor those to petition that case.
And it is typical to have them last this long?
Sometimes they can, yes.
Okay.
This is probably a rare case.
Okay.
But yes, this one is one that we carefully worked with the team, and this is the one we got the best advice on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept this.
Okay. Kathy made the motion?
I second it.
Ernestine seconds. Would you please raise your right hand if you approve? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. And Sean, I, I really do thank you very much for going back and working these workman comp cases to be able to get them to close down because that's cleaning up our books from long ago, so I appreciate your efforts to do that.
Well, as a result of that audit, I was just going to say that freed up about 25 million that we had set aside in reserves. So that allows money to close down these claims, and the team has spent a little over 200 hours, and approximately 1,000 claims have been closed out going back as far as 2003, so they've done a really good job.
Yes, and we thank you very much for that because that makes us much more current and more able to handle the current claims, so thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, under operations, facility planning and capital forecasting.
Kelly?
So I'd like to invite Luke forward for an overview of some work that we've been, it's been going on a while in the district, and Luke's going to recap us on some deferred maintenance information and facilities.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and call you Superintendent Beilefeld. So, good afternoon, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and members of the board. I'm joined today by our Director of Design and Construction, Randy Scott, and we'll be speaking to you about our district's facility planning and capital forecasting practices and the status of our current efforts in that regard. To give a quick recap of what brought us to this point, over the past year, the Facilities Division has been conducting a full-scale facility assessment of all buildings district-wide. This work was a result of the board's desire to gain a clearer and more holistic understanding of our district's short and long-term capital needs. So I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for seeing the need to collect more accurate data on our facility needs and for the financial support and commitment it took to achieve. So this will be the first of at least two presentations in which we'll provide the board with an overview of the facility planning process and ultimately present the findings and outcome of the facility assessment work we have been conducting over the past year. The goals of today's presentation are to define what a facility assessment is and all that goes into it, define the term deferred maintenance, explain how we determine and utilize a building measurement called Facility Condition Index, which is FCI for short, and then identify next steps from here.
So over the past year, we have been working with local designers, engineers, contractors, and district personnel to gather the data on all of our buildings. Schaefer Architecture, formerly Schaefer, Johnson, Cox &amp; Frye, and professional engineering consultants have been leading the charge in walking all of our buildings and documenting the observed condition, anticipated life cycles, the replacement cost of all of our building systems, and some examples of the buildings, systems that were captured were HVAC, electrical, plumbing, exterior, brick, roofing, windows, doors, carpet, and ceilings, and many more. All that data then has got to be put into a warehouse, a way to organize it. So all the data was taken and put into a program called VFA Facility, which is a facility planning software that takes facility data and cross-references it with a construction database that provides real-time construction data for all building components such as labor, materials, inflation, regional factors, and other considerations. VFA then takes that, this information, and uses it to produce year-over-year projections and funding models for capital planning purposes. Shown here is a general visual of how the facility planning process works from start to finish to further illustrate how the VFA software is used. We start, in the top left, we start by assessing and taking inventory of all of our facility assets and their condition. Our assets include land, building, and everything inside of them, and then next, the condition of our asset, assets is scored using a standard measurement called Facility Cost, Facility Condition Index, which is the top right-hand slide. And we'll, which we'll get more into in a moment, so we'll talk a little bit about Facility Condition Index in a moment. From there, we start to frame our holistic picture of long-range needs and projected funding models, which leads us finally into the implementation phase of prioritizing and completing projects based on true funding available and areas of greatest need. So here's an example of a typical report you might run from the VFA data. This example represents a smaller school district. This is not our school district. This is a smaller 15-building, 2 million square foot school district. In this model, the orange bar represents the maintenance backlog, which starts at 82 million in year 2024 in this case. And the blue bar represents the available funding going into addressing the maintenance backlog. The numbers reflect a 4.7% inflation rate, which is why you see the blue bar steadily grow. The orange bar also accounts for inflation, but there's much more fluctuation because of the amount of, the amounts compound as additional buildings reach, or built, building components reach the end of their life and get added to the pile of needs. As you can see, as, at the start, there's a sizable funding gap versus what, and that's based upon the funding that's available versus what's actually going in to address the need. And then the gap continues to grow as the years pass, and, and the needs continue to grow, but the funding stays relatively flat, so.
Okay, so now we'll get into some, a little more technical stuff. Like to take just a little time explaining how the Facility Condition Index, or Facility Condition Index measurement works and why it's so important in what we do in facility management. The formula is pretty basic but requires an understanding of two critical terms. The first is deferred maintenance, which is simply a building's postponed maintenance work due to limitations in resources. The second is replacement value, which is the current cost to replace an existing building with new. An important distinction to make is that the replacement value is not the valuation of the existing building itself, but rather the cost in today's dollars to knock it down and build an entirely new building of similar function and size. The FCI score represents the ratio of these two terms, total deferred maintenance to replacement value, as shown in the, in the equation there. Let me see here. Okay, so FCI is the industry standard measurement that is used to evaluate the condition of buildings, and all buildings have a score, even the brand-new ones. To boil it down, FCI represents the percentage of a building's total assets or components that have reached the end of their useful life. And I'd like to take, one, I'd like to make one quick point before diving deeper into how we use FCI. Deferred maintenance has a negative connotation in general, but it is not necessarily a bad thing. It is a reality of every building. They all have some amount of deferred maintenance. It becomes a bad thing when you do not manage it properly and your building falls into disrepair because you can't keep up. So in this next slide is an illustration of what the FCI score represents. To put it simply, the lower the score, the better. So as shown on the left, the relatively new building has an FCI score between 0 to 15%. As more components to the building reach the end of their lifecycle and begin to fail, the FCI score increases. The greater the need, the higher the score gets. So once your FCI scored, score exceeds 100%, that means it would be a wiser investment to close the building and build something new than it would be to invest the money needed to bring it back down to a sustainable level. To give you a frame of reference, school districts usually target an average FCI score between 30 to 45%. Anything less than 30% is generally considered fairly unrealistic. Here's, here's one more chart to further illustrate the FCI score ranges and what they represent. 15% and below generally feels, I mean, it feels essentially like a new building. 15 to 30%, your building is in good condition, everything generally operates as intended. 30 to 45%, some repairs are needed, but build, the buildings generally feel comfortable. 45 to 60%, the building is visibly in need of repair, some comfort and reliability issues exist, and the entity would, should be actively planning for improvement solutions. Above 60%, building functions have become unreliable, not aesthetically or environmental, environmentally comfortable in some areas, and imminent improvements are needed. So to tie this back, tie the FCI back to the funding and deferred maintenance example we gave earlier, you can see the impact that inadequate funding has on the total FCI score. In this example, the FCI score, score starts at 44% and grows to 81% over 10 years due to the increasingly large gap between the compounding deferred maintenance needs and funding available to address them. As the deferred maintenance number increases, so goes the FCI. Next slide, Patrick. So why is FCI such an important measurement? It is used as a benchmark to compare relative condition of a group of facilities, which then enables us to better prioritize capital improvement needs within that group of facilities. It gives us the ability to more strategically invest our resources in the areas of critical need that will most positively impact our long-range projections, and it enables us to better view what lies on the horizon and more proactively plan for how to manage it. Essentially, the FCI gives us a snapshot of how all of our buildings are performing and helps us navigate where to best spend capital dollars in the interest of maintaining equity and consistent quality district-wide. And lastly, I want to tie this FCI concept back to our strategic plan and why it's so important. The obvious, obvious benefit of having a low FCI score is that it represents your buildings are generally in good shape, but there is also a more subtle but equally if not more important benefit that ties directly to strategic plan goal number four, which is schools trusted as safe places. There have been numerous studies conducted analyzing the impact school facilities have on the learning environment and ultimately student success. There are, of course, many factors that influence outcomes, but in general, student and teacher achievements in built, in buildings with lower FCI scores generally outperform those with higher FCI scores. To give a few examples, we know that improved temperature and humidity control results in increased student-teacher comfort, reduced absenteeism, better overall health, and improved focus. Improved lighting affects brain focus and visual clarity for learning. A student's sense of safety and security positively affects test scores, engagement, and mental health. And improved building infrastructure and interior finishes result in a more conducive and positive teaching and learning environment for all building occupants. These factors are all reflected in a building's FCI score. To bring this point home, the better the FCI score, the better the overall experience for students and staff, which in turn leads to improved morale, performance, and outcomes. So next steps. Right now, I'm guessing that you'd really, you're really kind of dying to know what our overall district FCI score is. I'm sorry to tease you, but we're not quite ready to share that information with you. We knew it would be critically important for the board to have a firm grasp on the concept of FCI before taking a deeper dive into our specific district data, which is why we devoted the presentation today to that purpose. We are, however, in the process of putting the finishing touches on our district data, and we'll be ready to present the findings to the board in July. Once we have our data finalized, we know that it will be of critical importance to keep it up to date as projects complete in order to ensure our FCI's remain current and aligned with our capital spending plan. And lastly, this work will lead us into the development of a 10-year master plan, which will become the roadmap for all capital plan projects. There's still much work to be done, but we're excited about the clarity and transparency this process will bring, and most of all, the impact it will have on our district's success. And now we will open it up to any questions you might have.
Ernestine?
The hard question. Does art or sentimentality have any number as far as the FCI score?
It does not.
With a follow-up to that, though, that doesn't mean that we don't look at that as a district. It just means that's not part of what the number is. Okay, all right.
It's just not, it's not reflected in the hard data of what, of the nuts and bolts of a building and what needs to be maintained, but there is definitely a consideration that needs to be given to the nostalgia and the.
Thank you.
Yeah, that history.
Okay. Hazel?
Is this the first time that this type of study's been done in our district?
I know, and Ms. Hudrick, I know was, was involved in the past, there have been assessments in a way done in various different, I would say, this, what ESER has been, has benefited us in a lot of ways, but one of the greatest benefits from it is that it gave us the funding to do this, to undertake this, because in the, I mean, it does take a pretty large financial commitment, as the board knows, and so it was something that we just didn't have the money to invest in the past, and such, when there are so many other capital needs and things for students, and so, yes, it's been done, I would say, to this level and this detail, this is, this is the first, the first for us, I would say.
So I was just wondering if there's some type of measurement that we could use from the past study to compare to the current study that you're doing, so that?
I, I don't, I think we're, we're far enough away from that information that it's not really relevant anymore.
Gotcha.
That's the thing, if you don't keep it up to date, it's, it really, you know, it's not worth the paper it's written on if it's not something that you're actively keeping updated as you go, so.
Okay.
And we, and we did actually lean into some of that old data. We have the old records, it was where we pulled some of the information from, so we used what we could, but I think it's been used up as much as it could be.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
Could you just remind the board of the different items that we did approve, and you're talking about, you know, we had the availability of ESER funds and made a larger financial commitment into this process than we've ever been able to do in the past? Like, just remind us when we purchased the software, our approval of Schaefer and the engineering firm, just kind of, just give, give me a, just a reminder of these things that we've done that have led us to this point?
Sure. So you might need to help me with this, but we, you know, Schaefer, John, or I guess just Schaefer now, Schaefer, we brought, we brought on to conduct the, the facility assessments district-wide. That involved, oh gosh, I don't know, probably six other sub consultants underneath you guys, various engineering, mechanical consultants. And then, and so that was all part of one contract. We also have utilized some outside consulting that was part of a, an open, an on-call agreement that we already had open. So they, they helped us kind of pull all the data and put it into the, the VFA Facility Assessment Software. And that's part of that open agreement that we already had in place for now, but moving forward, that is going to be a cost to us, but we really wanted to, so the VFA software, we're not currently paying for, but it will be a licensing thing that we will be coming to the board asking for in the future, but I didn't want to ask the board for that money yet until you saw the value that it brings to our district.
So currently, we're using software owned by one of these other entities. Is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's just kind of being funneled through one of our other vendors, and that, but we have access to all the information, and we will for the next year until we renew our licensing and it actually becomes our licensing.
Okay.
Did I miss anything that?
No, to answer your question, there was a sizable investment, and I think that's what you're asking.
Right, it is.
The, the investment to Schaefer alone was almost a million dollars. The investment in software and the consultant, because we had to partner with a consultant who had experience with the software, who knew how to manage it, who knew how to put it together, who knew how to model the systems that weren't, that weren't collected, but were a part of a building, and that cost was around 160,000. So just in the facility assessment portion alone, we're around 1.1 million or so.
And, I'm, sorry, I have a couple more.
No, go ahead.
Reflective of Hazel's comment about what we, what's been done in the past, would, would it be, and, and I don't know whether the rest of the board would be interested in this or not, but I, I would be interested in just kind of a review of history of, you know, what we, what has been done by boards in the past relative to preparing master plans for facility improvements, just so that we could see what other boards have done and what we're going to potentially be able to do because of the fact that we have these additional resources, so.
Sure.
You know, if you got till July, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, we'll include that in our next presentation. We'll probably lean on our friends with Schaefer for some of that history, too.
And, and then my last comment kind of piggybacks off Ernestine's, but is, you know, just maybe, you know, goes even, digs even deeper than hers does. You know, historical value, aesthetics, whether a building is an icon in the community, the quality of the construction of that building compared to what you're going to get in the new one, just all of those things that are important factors that not, can't necessarily be reflected. be reflected in that data formula. So I just, I just think that that's something that's important for not only the board to keep in mind, but also the community to keep in mind. I think, obviously, I think this is great, what you're doing, and obviously, we need to know these things to make good decisions to move forward, and we're very data-driven. This is excellent data to have, but it doesn't, it's not necessarily the only thing that we need to look at.
Right, right. It's one data point of many that we'll be looking at and considering as we make decisions moving forward, yeah.
Diane?
How will this information be maintained?
So we have a person internal in Randy's department that'll be kind of the master of the program, and will be visiting with all of our project managers in the department, knowing what they're planning and bidding out, and as work gets completed, it'll get updated in the software. But it's going to be, that's why we're going to, we're going to need this software moving forward, and that's why it's going to be so important to keep it, to make sure it stays updated and all that, but that's why we'll be for sure asking you for that cost in the future.
So this is really an entire change of how we have looked at maintaining our facilities from past to current. It's a total shift in that, correct?
Yep, that's accurate.
Okay. And then also, could you or Susan speak to the impact of ESAR funds on the facilities from the last three years?
Yeah, I think we can give you a quick snapshot. I do plan on including that in the next presentation we give in July. It's going to give you a good idea of kind of where we sit, where we would have sat had we not had the influx of ESAR dollars, and where we actually truly are because of that impact it had on us. So I don't know if that's going to answer your question, or...
That might be sufficient, then.
Okay.
If you've got that included in the next presentation, then, thank you.
Okay.
Stan?
I was just going to try to recap. So the Facility Condition Index, FCI, is a hard and cold number driven by staff, and it will be the job of the school board to determine other factors, the soft factors such as, that were mentioned by both Julie and Ernestine. Is that, would that be accurate to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Kelly?
So included in that, too, the FCI is one data point, as Luke said, and the factors that we've discussed here, we've also discussed internally as far as, you know, aesthetics and tradition and all those sorts of things. This also is just for deferred maintenance. So if we wanted to add square footage to a building for, you know, the lunchroom's not big enough, we need a bigger lunchroom, we need a secured entrance, that's not part of this factor. So this is just deferred maintenance. So it's going to, we're going to have to look at all of those things as we look at the future, the ten-year plan that Luke's putting together, and prioritize. But what it does do is it gives us a cost, you know, that we know, you know, Susan told us a couple months ago that, I believe, the average age of our buildings is 1962 or something like that. So there's a cost to maintaining old buildings, but at least we know what that is, and we know in an objective way, so we can measure apples to apples across the district. But we need to factor in more than just, you know, just, you know, it isn't as though this FCI is just going to be the be-all, end-all, and that's going to determine all of our decisions. There's way more to it than just that. So, is that fair, Luke?
Yes, yes, sir.
Stan, did you still?
I just had one last thing, and it just left my mind. No, I remember now. I appreciate you saying the fact that we should not look at the word deferred maintenance as completely a negative. It's obviously a challenge, but if you look at our, each individual situation with our homes and our cars, there are times where my deferred maintenance on my house may be, I may let it run a little bit, and then at a particular time, bring that deferred maintenance down, and sometimes I may even be completely caught up. So it's not a, it's basically just showing that we are no different than individuals and other companies, and that deferred maintenance has its ebbs and flows, and it's something that you deal with, you don't ignore, but doesn't mean that you have to be caught up at every single moment, every single day, because neither, we as individuals aren't either.
Right, right. That's a good way to put it.
Ernestine? Thanks. That makes good sense. My house has needed painting for about three years, and I finally got it done this spring. I appreciate what you've said, and what Stan said, and what Julie said, and these questions here, because the deferred maintenance, and Kelly, what you just said, is that this is not the same thing as if we have a need to build a bigger thing. I want to make sure that people understand that, like, North High is such a beautiful building, that the deferred maintenance, even if it gets pretty high, we're going to get in there and repair things and do it. We're not going to say, well, gee, just like we did with East High, we're not going to say, let's throw it away and build new because the deferred maintenance is so much. I really appreciate this presentation. I think that one of the things in this town is that a lot of people have been upset about, for example, Century Two, because they didn't understand some of this thing that you're talking about, even all along in the last few years, where people kept saying, there's some maintenance that needs to be done. If you do the maintenance, we can keep the building, this sort of thing. And I appreciate that for our buildings, because we do have some really historic buildings, some beautiful buildings, and more than that, we've got children who are attached to the buildings, and this is where they went to school. I went to Sunnyside, and it's no longer with us, but that's the kind of thing that I think it is more than just the figures, but the figures give us something that the public can understand why we have to spend X number of dollars, instead of saying, well, how come you're doing that over there and not this here? I appreciate this very much, and I appreciate your comments, Kelly. Julie?
And just piggybacking on that, I also think the comment that you made that's very important is the issue of equity. And I picked up on that, that this process also helps us to be equitable across the district, and, you know, that we're, that, again, we're paying attention to all of our schools and not leaving certain ones behind.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to kind of reiterate a couple of pieces. This has been said several times, but this is just deferred maintenance that we normally maintain with our capital funds, but our capital funds isn't keeping up with our buildings and the aging process and the inflation. Is that kind of a fair statement?
That cat is not out of the bag yet, but that is, that is a, let's say, that's a fair prediction of what's coming.
Okay. Well, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to do that, figure that out. All of our buildings, every single building, including non-attendance centers, will get an FCI rating?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned that you're going to be coming at some point back with the license for the program, the computer program that helps us maintain this and deal with it, but this is a big chunk in our current or our future master plan for facilities in the district, correct?
Yes.
And even though this doesn't include new construction, the master plan might?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So what we're doing is we're laying the groundwork to look to the future, to maintain and add to our buildings as is needed in order to support our school district.
Yep. It'll be a data point to help the board make whatever decisions are needed moving forward.
Okay. And that's really, I appreciate this presentation, because I understand when the term FCI comes rolling across the internet in an email or whatever, I understand what it is now. So I appreciate the presentation today, and I look forward to the one in July, and I'll try to not let any cats out of the bag. Thank you very much, Kelly. Is there anything else you want to add?
Nope, I think that's good.
Okay, thank you. Good presentation. Next item?
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
All right, well, I just wanted to share a couple things. Graduations, thank you all for attending graduations. We're in full swing. The zoo was an awesome opportunity yesterday, and I'm not sure if any of you guys made it out, but our teacher appreciation day at the zoo was perfect weather, fantastic day. Wendy's team did an amazing job of preparing everything and having treats and goodies and everything for the staff. So just to reiterate what Ernestine said, and passing along, just really thank our teachers, thank our staff for an incredible year. We're down to the last few days, and we will make it through, and, you know, we just appreciate all the hard work that everyone's put in this year. And in just a few short days, we'll be on to summer school and summer camps and construction projects that Luke has going on, and all of that fun stuff. So as I put in my memo last week, if you want to come with me to check out any of that fun stuff going on this summer, just let me know, and we'll be out in buildings seeing cool stuff. So that was all I had for today.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Kathy?
First, I want to say welcome Superintendent Beilefeld to the table. It's nice to have you here, and I got a picture of your first day on the job. I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Future Ready Center and got goosebumps. I'm, this is something I can really sink my teeth into. I'm so excited about this, and I was really grateful to be a part of it, so thank you for inspiring that. It is the end of the school year, and we thank our teachers all the time, but there's another group that I really want to pay attention to, and that's our substitute teachers. I really want to say thank you for all who have jumped in, and I'm a substitute in Derby, and I, you know, we are needed. And so I just really want to put it out there that the substitutes are greatly appreciated for jumping in. That's all.
Thank you. Julie?
With this being the time when we're doing all of our graduations, I want to once again congratulate the graduates, and I'm excited about our graduation rate increasing. And then on, in piggybacking on that, also want to thank our teachers, all of them, teachers, paras, subs, all of the teachers and staff that have worked so hard this year. And then I also want to thank the parents. If it weren't for our teachers and staff and parents, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do with our kids and bring them to graduation, so thank you.
Hazel?
Well, this month is very, these last couple of months have been very busy months, and I would just like to mention a few things. I was able to attend the Indian education schools out Powell. I think it was a huge success. We had a huge support from the community. I also went to Washington's school, elementary school world fair, where I was able to share a part of my culture in their activities. Earth Day at Earhart Magnet, again, I was able to set up a teepee and interact with the students. I went to an art show at Riverside Elementary. I'm so amazed at the community support that that little school has. It's just a beautiful little school, and the parents and students and teachers are so engaged in everything that they're doing. I had the opportunity to go to Minnehaw Family Night, where, again, I did a presentation. Spring meeting for the Kansas Association of Native American Education in Maia, Kansas, to get updates on Indian education in our, actually, in our state. I went to North High graduation, beautiful ceremony, the first class of the Red Hawks graduation class, so that was very exciting, and also the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Future Ready Center, which was probably the first place, one of the first places that I visited when I became a member of this board. So very impressed when I walked in that building that I thought was abandoned and saw an airplane being built. So it was very impressive. I encourage everyone to get out and go and visit that site. I also would like to thank the teachers. I don't think there are words that we can even say that could express our gratitude through your commitment, and I know that this has been a very hard year for everyone, and we, I want you to know that myself and the board, I know, fully supports you and your efforts, and we thank you for your timeless commitment and thankless job of being an educator and administrator. That's all I have.
Thank you. Diane?
Okay, it is a busy month, so just a few highlights, just quickly. I attended a fentanyl awareness day, a flag-raising event at the Old Cedric County Courthouse, where the county commissioners and other city elected officials were there to bring awareness to the fentanyl crisis in town. I toured the Dunlap Transition Campus, and then later I attended their graduation ceremony. I also attended the WPS Retirement and Longevity Event that's at Botanica, and that's always a great time to just thank our teachers and staff members that have been here at the district for a few decades at least, and then those that are retiring. It's just a great time to say thank you for your service, your dedication, and your hard work for all these years, to the staff, to the students, to the community at large here. So that was a great event to attend. And then I attended Northeast Magnet graduation, and then also, probably one of the highlights was the Future Ready ribbon-cutting ceremony. As a person who is in, as a general contractor, who I work with my hands every day, it's great to see the district put so much financial support, so much partnership with community members, with other businesses that are in town, to get students excited about working with their hands. They are building an airplane in that facility, so my husband, who's been in aviation his entire life, was very excited to see that. And I would just encourage people, if you want to go see that, contact one of us, contact somebody, and we'll take you on a tour. It's a very impressive environment, because there's anything from laser engraving machines to, I think, Kelly, you said there was a forklift training simulator, so there's all kinds of different stuff that the students get hands-on experience, and they can really try things out. And so, just as somebody who works with their hands every day, that's very exciting to see, and it's an opportunity that I hope all of our students get access to and take advantage of.
Thank you. I, like all of the rest of the board members, have attended multiple events over the last month, in fact, the last two weeks since our last board meeting. And it is always a thrill to go to our graduations. I don't care how many times I hear pomp and circumstance, the minute that music comes on, I get real sad and weepy, and yet full of joy, because I know there's new beginnings for our students. But we also have to realize that summer is a busy, busy time, too, because we're getting ready for the new school year, and a whole lot of things are going to be happening next year, and we're excited to see them come. So, Stan?
Thank you. I've also enjoyed all the end-of-the-school-year events, especially the graduations. I appreciate the West High students letting me do, walk with them, and their tradition of walking from West High to Century Two. That was a wonderful night and a wonderful tradition. Tonight, I'll do South High's graduation, my alma mater, so I always look forward to that. I think when I was, when I first got on the board, our graduation rate was 74%. It is now at 80%, and that is not something to take granted, take it for granted. That extra 6% took an extraordinary effort from this board, from the administration, from our teachers, to our substitute teachers, to our students, and it took some extra money as well. And the critics will say graduation does not mean anything. I dare you to sit in a graduation and look into the faces of some of these kids, and some of their parents and their families, and say that graduation doesn't mean something. On top of that, our graduations are also now, with graduation plus, encouraging and working toward each student receiving two market-driven skills in addition to their high school graduation. So we have really upped our game here, and it has created some heartburn, there's no doubt about it. I mean, it has taken some extra effort that created heartburn for a lot of people, but it was worth the effort. And as we enter into our strategic plan, planning time, I want us to keep in mind that this graduation rate still needs to be a high priority. The state goal is 90 to 95%, I believe, so we still have a long ways to go. I can only imagine what it would take to get up to 90%, but it can be done, and I'm committed to doing that. I just wanted to quickly also report that, along with Diane Albert, we served on the Audit Committee, and I wanted to thank the financial staff, our CFO, our control... financial staff, our CFO, our controller, our budgeting people. This was not an easy audit. They had a big ESAR fund to examine, and I'm proud to announce to the public that the audit came up clean. We have two members of our community who are financial leaders in this community, who can look at those numbers and analyze them far better than probably Diane and I can. But, the bottom line is, when you see information from the Wichita School District on money, that, once again, our audit was clean, and those money, those dollar amounts that you see are trust, can be trusted, and have been independently verified. So, I just wanted to thank the staff for their hard work on another successful audit. Thanks, Cheryl.
Ernestine?
I was able to go to the Chester Lewis graduation that also included Town East Learning Center. There were 300 kids that graduated, no, young adults that graduated. Many of them had been through many struggles. Many of them had been out of school and came back. I was so impressed. Quite frankly, my hand was numb that evening by the time I joined. And then I was able to go to East High's graduation. I'm an alumna of East High. That was very emotional for me, because, just as the other graduation, I love teenagers, but I especially love them at graduation. There they are, all scrubbed and clean and proud, and maybe their hair stands out to here so that the hat had to be pinned on, but they're so shy and proud, excited and adventuresome and scared, and they just give you such hope. You know this nation and this world is going to be okay when you look at those faces. Online, I did put a couple of pictures, including two of the girls that took off their sky-high shoes and were walking barefooted out of the Coke Arena, because they'd been walking in wobbling. I love teenagers. That was just a wonderful thing. I just want to tell the society, and like Stan said, our community, we have such a successful program, and it is working just beautifully. Most people don't know that in the 1970s, 80s, and 90s, the graduation rate was around 60 to 65%. The difference was, in those days, kids could drop out and they could go get a job at one of the plants around here. One of the jobs that took manual labor, and they could make a living. But we're at a place now that without education, the kids that don't get the education, they're not going to be able to get some of the jobs, most of the jobs that are available. I am so thrilled that our district has been able to, like our Graduation Plus. Let me just give you one of the stats, just a second here. In addition to graduating with a diploma from our high school, this is just East High. Well, here's some stats. They came from 24 different countries, the graduates that were at East High. They had, 34% of the graduates were the first person in their family to go on to post-secondary. They have, in addition to their diploma, they're in that class alone, and we've got all these other high schools that graduated. They had 1,642 college credit hours that they were awarded in addition to a diploma. Not only that, but the graduates from East High, the senior class, had been awarded $21,742,000 in scholarships, over 21, in just that one high school, and yet we have all of these other schools. We should be extremely proud in this Wichita community. We're doing such wonderful things. That's all.
Thank you. And we could definitely echo that for the schools that we've been at.
Sure, North High.
That's right, yeah. Okay, next item, please?
Next item, New Business.
I'm seeing none. Next item?
Next item, Executive Session.
Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss pending negotiations between the Board of Education and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations, exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at 1:30.
Okay, the motion was made to move to executive session by Diane and seconded by Stan. Please raise your hand if you vote yes. Motion passes 7-0. We are in executive session. I call the meeting back to order. Diane?
I moved the board recess into an executive session to discuss a settlement related to civil mediation with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at 1:50.
There was a motion for executive session from Diane, seconded by Stan. Please raise your hand. Motion passes 4-0. We are in our second executive session. Thank you. Okay, I call the meeting back to order from executive session. No action was taken. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make your motion to adjourn. I seconded.
The motion to adjourn was made by Kathy and seconded by Ernestine. Please raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. We will see you in June.